Yeah.
You're all set?
All set? Ready to rock? All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the town council meeting of July 18th, 2022. I'd like to start off with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to roll call up first, Council Marvel.
Here.
Council Davis.
Present.
Council Hurst.
Yeah.
Council Gary.
Present.
Council Moffett is present. Up first, we have a public comment. If anyone would like to make any comments, the public comments should step up to the podium and state your name for the record. There, or if there's anyone at home, please raise your hand. None? None? All right, with that being said, announcements and announcements. Tonight, we have Chief Palmer here. He's going to present a presentation of awards.
Good evening. I want to thank the town council for allowing us to have the awards tonight. We actually have six awards here. Four are letter of recognitions and two letter of commendations. The first one is actually for three different recipients. Detective Glenn Ahearn, Detective John Forbes, and Secretary Jill McDade. It's in reference to our accreditation. The department got accredited back in 2018. Sergeant Perswell, who's in the audience here, did that back then. Did it while he was on second shift patrol and did a nice job. The second accreditation really is a little bit more stringent. So therefore, what I did was I divided up between the three managers. And I kind of equated with driving down the football field with you're trying to get to the goalpost and in the first two and a half years, you're driving, you finally get to the 10-yard line, and then it's like a whirlwind. Next six months is where all the work comes in and you've got to manage your time. And they did so, and they did a nice job. So I will read the letter of recognition for all three of them. Detective Ahearn, Detective Forbes, Secretary McDade, for their exceptional work as the Hopkinton Police Accreditation Crime Managers in conjunction with the Raleigh Police Accreditation Commission, known as RIPAC. The three members spearheaded the review, development, and compliance of 204 applicable RIPAC accreditation standards. These standards are designed to improve and evaluate overall performance, guide policies for the future, and ensure standard compliance. Over the past three years, the three members continued with their everyday duties while also coordinating with the other members of Hopkinton Police and RIPAC to meet these standards. On October 10th, 2021, the above members of the Hopkinton Police met with RIPAC Executive Director Christine Crocker and five examiners for a mock accreditation. On March 23rd, 2022, Director Crocker and two examiners met for the official accreditation review. In May 2022, RIPAC Director advised that the accreditation assessment had been completed and Hopkinton Police had successfully passed the accreditation renewal. Detective Ahearn, Detective Forbes, and Secretary McDade are recognized for their police and computer knowledge, diligence, and tenacity in completing the arduous task of accreditation of the Hopkinton Police Department. The three-year RIPAC accreditation results in enhanced professionalism within the Hopkinton Police Department. And I'd ask that the three of them would come up here and receive their award. We also have Victory McDade accepting the award. You hear in the background. Good job.
Thank you.
The second award goes out to Captain Mark Carrier. If you don't know Captain Carrier, he's kind of a workout buff. He probably works out six days a week, whether it be weights, running, or CrossFit. He's one of those guys gets up at four o'clock to get to the CrossFit at five o'clock. So he's always tried to encourage all the officers to stay in shape. Obviously, it's a tough job. You need to be physically fit. You have to have mentally fit as well. And I think working out helps to do that. We have a small workout room at the station. It's probably only about 12 by 12. Give the officers credit, they're kind of in the past gotten together, had a universal brought in there. They had dumbbells brought in. And but it's kind of large. We didn't have a really decent treadmill or a stationary bike for the cardio. So Captain Carrier went out and found a donor, somebody that would donate, and was able to donate $10,000. And they were able to get three pieces of equipment, which one of being the multipurpose, it brings in the weights, and the other more cardio. So I'll read the award. Captain Mark Carrier for procuring funds to purchase gym equipment. Captain Carrier has been a longtime believer in officers' need to stay physically and mentally fit. Captain Carrier works out with weights, runs long distance, and tends CrossFit classes regularly. The Hopkinton Police have always strongly encouraged officers to do the same, although funding was limited to update the older equipment in the police department gym. In 2021, police officers were faced with the added stress of nationwide civil unrest and COVID-19 pandemic. All the gyms in the state were mandatorily closed for close to a year, and home equipment was unavailable to purchase. In September 2021, Captain Carrier was able to locate an organization that was empathetic to the situation and donate $10,000 to the police department. The organization wishes to remain anonymous. Captain Carrier researched gym equipment and was able to purchase, one, an interactive Nordic track treadmill; number two, an interactive stationary bike; and number three, a multipurpose weight machine. With these three pieces of equipment, officers are able to keep themselves physically and mentally fit, whether gyms are open or not. Captain Carrier is presented with a letter of recognition for his proactivity in procuring funds to keep all the men and women of Hopkinton Police both physically and mentally fit for many years to come. I'd ask that you come up, Captain Carrier.
I guess I can't quit working out now.
Thank you, sir.
The next one is one of those better late than ever. Detective John Forbes. We had an incident. It was a tragic incident on Frontier Road going back to 2019. And subject died of an accident on that, at that location. And Detective Forbes was the case agent on that. And I can't tell you how many hours that he spent going through all the records and trying to determine exactly what happened to see if we could actually bring charges against people. And going back from 2019, it actually took about two years to complete, and that brought us right into the middle of COVID, which is the reason for the delay on the commendation itself. So I'll read the commendation. Detective John Forbes is commended for his outstanding work. In August of 2019, Hopkinton Police responded under the property of a restaurant on Frontier Road. The investigation took approximately two years to complete. On August 19th, 2019, Hopkinton Police received a call of a deceased male in a motor vehicle that was involved in a rollover accident. Detective Forbes was assigned as the case agent. An intensive investigation by many members of the Hopkinton Police ensued. It was determined that the deceased had patronized the restaurant up until closing time and used the restaurant owner's motor vehicle to go four-wheeling when it tipped over and causing the death. The investigation revolved, was to determine a timeline leading up to the crash, who may have been in the vehicle at the time of the death, and whether a crime had actually been committed. Detective Forbes executed 25 court-authorized search warrants on surveillance equipment, cell phones, cellphone records, cell sites, and vehicles. Conducted an accident reconstruction involving the state police and URI forensic unit and interviewed numerous witnesses. Ultimately, one subject was arrested for obstruction of justice and pled guilty. A liquor license hearing was conducted, and the restaurant lost its license to operate and was ultimately sold. Detective Forbes had the arduous task of investigation of death without the cooperation of the restaurant owners and several key witnesses. He maintained close contact with the deceased's next of kin. Detective Forbes is commended for his diligence and tenacity to determine the cause of the accident and bring some solace to the deceased's family. So I'd ask Detective Forbes to come up and get his commendation.
Thank you, sir.
The last one is a letter commendation for Sergeant Jason Eastwood. This revolves around a drug seizure of a large amount of marijuana and some other drugs, LSD, and a person that was selling that drugs. And actually, I think the arrest actually helped, I believe, the person that was actually dealing the drugs. We had had a lot of contact with that person for approximately eight months before this incident. And I believe there was some mental health issues at the time. And since that time, knock on wood, we've had very little contact with that person. So I think it was a win-win situation. Sergeant Jason Eastwood is commended for outstanding works on the 11th day of January 2022. On that date, Sergeant Jason Eastwood stopped a motor vehicle after observing it traveling on Main Street at 77 miles an hour in a 40 mile an hour zone. Both the operator and the passenger were extremely nervous. Sergeant Eastwood was familiar with the passenger from previous police contacts. Sergeant Eastwood detected a strong odor consistent with unburnt marijuana. Upon questioning, the operator admitted that he had a grinder with a small amount of marijuana. Sergeant Eastwood advised that he would be conducting a probable cause search. With that, the passenger presented two clear plastic bags of approximately one ounce of suspect marijuana. Search of the vehicle revealed a backpack, which contained another one-ounce bag of marijuana, THC cartridges, and approximately $1,200 in cash. The passenger admitted that all of the marijuana and paraphernalia was theirs. A cellphone was also seized. Both parties were returned to Hopkinton Police. The passenger signed a consent to search for the cellphone and the residence. The cellphone revealed hundreds of text messages requesting drugs for money. Seized from the residence was approximately two pounds of high potency marijuana, several LSD tablets, scales, vape cartridges, and a narcotic ledger. The restee admitted that they had been selling marijuana and pills for approximately six months. The restee was charged with possession of manufacturing and intent to deliver of marijuana in Schedule I. Sergeant Eastwood is commended for his proactivity in holding narcotics dealers accountable. Sergeant, if you could. That concludes the awards. A wide range of different activities from all the officers. They all did a great job, and we appreciate you and allow us to present the awards here at the town council.
Well, thank you for honoring your officers. I appreciate it.
We appreciate Chief and all your officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right. Up next, we have the Consent Agenda. Approved Town Council, well, I'm sorry, I apologize, approval of the agenda order. Does anybody have any objection to the order of the agenda?
No.
Without objection, I'll move on. Consent Agenda, approved Town Council Meeting Minutes of July 5th, 2022. Accept the following monthly financial slash activity report from the Town Clerk. Approve a refund as a result of an overpayment on the 2021 motor vehicle tax rule submitted by the Tax Clerk.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Scott, one second here.
I would ask that you remove the council meeting minutes of July 5th as they are incomplete and not before you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. President, I make a motion, the Consent Agenda be adopted, except the Town Council Meeting Minutes of July 5th, 2022, which are not available yet.
I second.
With a second, any discussion? All right, no discussion? All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, vacancies and appointments. Discuss and consider and possibly vote to accept the resignation of John Pennypacker as alternate member of the planning board.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept with deep regret the resignation of John Pennypacker as alternate member of the planning board.
I second with regret.
Is there a discussion?
Yes, I've known John for a number of years. He took an active interest in the town of Hopkinton, and I know at one time he was on a conservation commission. Then he served as an alternate member of the planning board, and he was really committed to this town. He was a native of Hopkinton, but he got involved and his moving out of town is, and he's moving to Connecticut, is a loss to the town and the state of Rhode Island.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I'd like to, Mr. President, I'd like to concur with my fellow councils, and I'm sure we all do. It's always a, it's always a tough time. We lose somebody who's very dedicated, that sits on a board. I wish John, I know John personally, I wish him the best luck in his future events.
And I also'd like to commend John for his activity with the planning board, and I also wish him success.
Yes, I wish him success as well.
And as to why, I had reached out to John to ask if he was interested in being on a plane, where I thought he'd be a great fit for it. And that's the direction that he headed, so it is fortunate for him, but unfortunate for us. But I would definitely like to thank John for his time on the plane. So with that being said, all in favor of accepting the resignation of Mr. Pennypacker?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Up next, number two, discuss, consider hosting the planning board alternate member vacancy on the website.
I make a motion that we place the planning board alternate member vacancy on the website.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, the motion passes. Up next, number three, discuss and consider and possibly vote to appoint Alana Russell to the land trust.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Alana Russell to the land trust.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
All I want to say is I do not know her. I met her during the interview. Her father was in school with me many years ago at Charro.
Mr. Chair, very good. She had excellent interview, and it's good, you know, she came back to Hopkins and to revisit her roots. I wish her the best luck on the land trust.
I would like just to add that I think she's a very qualified applicant, you know, with a, she's an entomologist, I believe, with a forestry background. So I think she definitely has, you know, potentially the technical knowledge and the interest to pursue this, you know, for the right reasons. So in that breath, I'm going to vote in favor of Ms. Russell.
Yeah.
So if there's not any more discussion, I'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Elena Russell is appointed to the land trust. Up next, hearings. Number one, proposed zoning ordinance. District use table amendments in regards to cannabis uses. Opening a hearing proposed on amendments to the zoning ordinance district use table of the Hopkinton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 134, Appendix A, entitled zoning. Proposed amendment to the district use table would establish and include Subcategory 9, medical and recreational marijuana and related juices, to be inserted at the end of the table beneath Category 875 gun clubs, introduced and sponsored by Council Moffett. All right, so everyone has before them, I believe, a district use table. This district use table was sponsored by me with the anticipation that recreational marijuana was going to be, become legal in the state of Rhode Island. I wanted to do a eyewitness. In recent history in Hopkinton is maybe the lack of getting ahead of some things. So I wanted to present this so that we could get the ball rolling and get ahead of it when it did become legal. So that's where we are. You have a district use table that is in front of you now on your packet that you've received before. I have gone and tried to make it a little more simple for you to understand. I have included the definitions and the state statutes in which these definitions are defined to correspond with the use category and the number in the use category. So with that being said, I am going to read the use category and read the definition so that everybody has a clear understanding of what the definition is. This is a very big or very long ordinance. Most of it contains language for the regulation of it. There's not a whole lot in regards to, you know, uses and stuff, but there are definitions and these are the uses that are being proposed. So the first use would be in Use Category 900, and that is the Compassion Center. And according to Rhode Island General Law, 21 through 28.6 dash 3 subsection 6, the definition is as follows. Compassion Center means a not-for-profit corporation, subject to the provisions of Chapter 6 of Title 7, and is licensed under 21 dash 28.6 through 12, that acquires, possesses, cultivates, manufactures, transfers, transports, supplies, or dispenses medical marijuana and/or related supplies and educational materials to patient cardholders and/or their registered caregiver, cardholder, or authorized purchaser. I don't know if we should, if, and if there's any feedback, is if we should maybe go through each use code and kind of have a discussion or go through them all and kind of, you know, whatever anyone had.
Go through them all.
We could discuss. So you want me to go through them all first and then back up? All right, so the next one is Use Category 901, and that is All right, so the next one is use category 901 and that is hybrid cannabis retailer. And that is for medical and recreational. According to Rhode Island general law 21 dash 28.11 dash three subsection 28, the definition for a hybrid cannabis or a hybrid compassion center means a compassion center licensed pursuant to chapter 28.6 of title 21 that is in good standing with the Department of Business Regulation and has paid the fees pursuant to 21 through, I'm sorry, 21 dash 28.11 dash 10 and has been authorized to sell non-medical or adult use to consumers. Up next is a use category 902 and that is for cannabis retailer recreational only, which means an entity licensed pursuant to state statute 21 dash 28.11 through 10.2 to purchase and deliver cannabis and cannabis products from cannabis establishments and to deliver, sell, or otherwise transfer cannabis and cannabis products to cannabis establishment establishments and consumers. The next use is use 903 and that's cannabis cultivator. Rhode Island general law 21 dash 28.6 dash three subsection 11. That means an entity licensed to cultivate, process, package cannabis, to deliver cannabis to cannabis establishment and to transfer cannabis to other cannabis establishments, but not to consumers. The next use is 904 and it's cannabis testing laboratory. Rhode Island general law 21 dash 28.11 through three subsection 17 states that a cannabis testing laboratory means a third-party analytical testing laboratory that is licensed annually by the commission in consultation with the Department of Health to collect and test samples of cannabis and cannabis products pursuant to regulations issued by the commission and is subsection I, independent financially from any medical cannabis treatment center or any licensee or cannabis establishment for which it conducts a test. And subsection two, qualified to test cannabis in compliance with regulations promulgated by the commission pursuant to this chapter. The term includes but is not limited to a cannabis testing laboratory as provided in state statute 21 dash 28. Point 11 through 11. Next use is use 905, use category 905 and that's cannabis product manufacturer. Rhode Island general law 21 dash 28.11 dash three subsection 14. Cannabis product manufacturer or product or marijuana, marijuana product manufacturer means an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, package cannabis and cannabis products to deliver cannabis and cannabis products to cannabis establishments and to transfer cannabis and cannabis products to other establishments, but not to consumers. Not to get ahead of myself, but the, the state legislature passed, I believe it was May 30th.
Yeah.
The law to, to allow recreational cannabis. So all this language is coming from the state statute. It is copied and pasted in into our use table here. My proposal is that because this is being regulated through the state and there's very, there's a structure, regulatory structure that I will discuss here too. I just want everybody to have a background so I can hear it.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I think we should let everyone know that I think that the definitions you just read would be an amendment for what was actually brought on the agenda. So those, those definitions that were on the agenda were just updated just. Exactly. So, I mean, that's why there's a discrepancy between what you just, a little bit.
Okay. Okay, so, so can I take a consensus now to see if everyone's in agreement with the use table as it was?
Well, as you just described it.
Yes.
Yes, I think that what, what we, what, what you've just done was just, what's on the agenda had some proposed use categories and those were just updated to make sure they matched the definitions of the state, of the terminology of the state. So there is a little bit of variation of the terminology that's been updated.
There is. So this use table did not have definitions. So the, what I am proposing as an amendment to the use table that was submitted is what I just read. And I would like to add those definitions, you know, those would be in the ordinance as well. I've attached the, in this proposed use table that I am, I would like to amend, I put the Rhode Island general laws on it as well so that anyone who was concerned or wanted to understand it a little more, they could, they could easily follow. I mean, I, I understand there's, you know, people who aren't thrilled about this, aren't happy about it or whatever, but, you know, the bigger thing is, is understanding it. It's, it's legal in our state now, so we've kind of got to, I mean, just as any other business in this state, it is legal. So we have to get over that or understand that, I should say, for, for a lack of better words. So with that being said and moving any farther, is, are we in agreement with this use table as far as it's, it is presented? I want everyone to understand.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
Right, I mean, we're not approving anything obviously, but we are in consensus.
Right, so I mean, I, I went through to confirm that, you know, the, the use, the terminology, the definitions that the council president just described, you know, go into the use table that would match the state, state law. So that is, so those are just the same definitions that the state uses.
Exactly. So, you know, the state does allow for, for some, for some local control. Some of those local controls are city attack out, you know, it says, right. So we'll be able to, you know, control, you know, like smoking in public or using cannabis in public. The state law currently has, you know, distances and, you know, from schools and stuff like that. So, so, you know, the fact that it's heavily regulated or it's going to be heavily regulated with a cannabis control commission and a cannabis advisory board appointed by the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, and, and the Governor. I think that, you know, we are not going to be able to supersede state law.
So I could read right from the statute. So there's, there's a statute that was just recently enacted this year. It's section 21 dash 28.11 dash 16, titled Local Control. Subsection A says that a city or town may adopt ordinances and bylaws that impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of cannabis establishments, provided they are not unreasonable and impracticable and are not in conflict with this chapter or with regulations made pursuant to this chapter. So one of the things that this new state law does is creates a cannabis control commission that will be putting forth more regulations. We don't know what those are going to say yet. So part of the reason I would suggest, you know, not putting a lot of detail into the ordinance is you couldn't put something in there that will conflict with these regulations. You don't know what they are yet.
But it does give us, it does give.
So things like, you know, it has to be a certain distance from a school, that would be fine, or operating.
That's what we could kind of, we could kind of.
But the state, as far as like the security of these establishments, the background and checks that go into the licenses process, very, very comprehensive.
Extremely comprehensive. Some of these applications are 300 pages.
I mean, this is.
There's.
Can you read what a postdoc on it said? Can you give me the number again? You had 21 dash 28 point?
21 dash 28.11 dash 16.
Thank you.
And so subsection A goes on and it lists four things that the town may, may do. So one is govern the time, place, and manner, manner of cannabis establishment operations and of any business dealing in cannabis accessories. Excepted the zoning ordinance shall not prevent conversion of a compassion center to a recreational use. Limit the number of cannabis establishment below, so you can't say that the town will accept fewer than the state's regulatory scheme would allow for. The town may restrict the license cultivation, processing, and manufacturing of cannabis that is a public nuisance. The town may establish reasonable restrictions on public signs related to cannabis establishments. However, if a city or town enacts an ordinance or bylaw more restrictive than the commission's standard, which we don't know what that would be, then the local ordinance and bylaw shall not impose a standard for signs more restrictive than those applicable retail establishments that sell alcoholic beverages within the city or town. And the town may establish a severe penalty for violation of an ordinance or bylaw enacted pursuant to this subsection similar to a penalty imposed for violation of an ordinance or bylaw relating to alcoholic beverages. Subsection B of the statute says that a city or town may adopt ordinances to ban or impose restrictions on the smoking or vaporizing of cannabis of the places, including outdoor common areas, parks, beaches, athletic and recreational facilities, and other public space. If the council did want to enact an ordinance to that effect, that would be a separate thing from, from the zoning ordinance. That would be a separate item to take up.
So the, so the, so the zoning ordinance is not going to.
Well, it could. That, I mean, these are, that is something that you, but I think that the goal, I think overall from the state is that town is not vote, is going to treat marijuana businesses similar to the way that they would treat alcoholic beverage businesses. So you wouldn't impose restrictions on a retail cannabis store that would be substantially different from what you would put on a cannabis store. I think that is the gist of what the state is trying to accomplish here is that those two things should be regulated in similar ways on the local level. So hours of operation, you know, location or distance from uses like schools and daycares, those would all be appropriate. But it's also difficult for the council to legislate on things where there's a state ordinance going to put out regulations. So it might be worth revisiting this when, when those become available. But as of right now, I would say that most of the issues related to businesses are very, very comprehensive.
It's also so regulated that retail licenses. So the state currently has three compassion centers with six compassion centers that are in, in the works right now that have already been approved. So what the state's going to do is allow 24 new retail licenses. So what that's also going to do is, so new licenses are distributed and so there's going to be four licenses distributed in each of the six zones. So there's six zones within the state. Each zone is going to be allowed up to four operations. So the likelihood that, you know, anything in Hopkinton would be exceed one. We're not going, these aren't going to be convenience stores. They're not going to be liquor stores. We would have fewer, you know, operations than we would have liquor stores or bars or anything like that. So there's also going to be a two-year moratorium on cultivators licenses, which, you know, I think someone spoke to it before that we currently have two cannabis cultivators in, in town already based on our prior zoning. So with, with that being said, and what that means is that there will not be any more licenses given for another two years for, for cultivators. And, and that is so the state can get an idea of the impacts on the amount and being able to supply these, these retail centers. So that's just kind of a little more information. The state is going to have a 20% tax on it. It's going to be 7%. It's going to be the state, state sales tax. State cannabis excise tax is going to be 10% and the local cannabis excise tax is going to be 3%. And the, the local tax will be remitted to the municipality with a point of sale occurs. So, so the town of Hopkinton would, if, if approved, receive 3% of, of the sales from cannabis to be returned to the town. Is there any discussion, any, anything, anybody wants to add in the meantime? Go ahead, Scott.
Just a general discussion on the whole ordinance?
Sure.
Okay, I have several concerns and first of all, I think I've stated this publicly. I have a concern when the Food and Drug Administration of the United States does not approve something and they haven't approved marijuana. So I have a problem. It's just like giving illegal aliens a driver's license. They're here illegal. And the big, the bigger question is what federal laws do we ignore and states can choose to ignore and how many they have to accept? So that contradiction in and of itself. I do have, I think it's important to me as a town council member to recognize that the planning board of this town is not unanimous. It's in our packet and I would suggest anybody that's interested to look at the observations of the Hopkin and Planning Board in their division on this topic. That being said, I also think I have a responsibility as a councilman to, and I do have a question for our attorney. Is it, is it legally possible, if we were so inclined, I'm not saying we're so inclined, to prohibit any marijuana sales in the town of Hopkinton? Is that legally permissible, like some towns prohibit any alcohol being sold? Is that legally?
That kind of gets to the referendum section, which is also on the agenda. But as of now, the.
You would have to pass it at a referendum. That would be.
I, you know, you, the use table is just for the purpose of saying which zones in the town, these various different uses would or would not be permitted. So right now, a city or town may adopt ordinances and bylaws that impose reasonable safeguards on the operation of cannabis establishment, provided they are not unreasonable and impractical and are not in conflict with this chapter. And so if the town wanted to say, you know, put in a use table that said no, no, no across the board, I mean, is the state going to say that's unreasonable and impracticable? I, I, I'm not sure. I think that what this comes down to more is this referendum more so than zoning ordinance. That's whether that goes to voters or not as a decision.
Yeah.
And that would be, the effect of the referendum would be, one, that the state would not issue licenses for the retail establishments here. And then, two, the town also would lose out on the ability to share in that 3% tax that is.
Okay, and I have some other notes on, on that. One of the things I think, and we have to realize that marijuana is different than alcohol because the aroma of somebody smoking weed can impact you if you're nearby, unlike somebody drinking an alcoholic beverage. So it's, it has more of an impact on people in the vicinity than it, than somebody drinking. So a lot of times people compare marijuana to alcohol. A lot of things that people, you know, like questionable, you know, phonographic material and stuff like that. A lot of times that, or adult entertainment is usually restricted to manufacturing or maybe commercial. And the other thing is limit, limit licenses within the town. I, I believe that, and I've said this publicly, and I know Councilor Davis has said that the people should vote on it. And I do believe in democracy, but I do want to hear the debate and but the other thing is before, right, I'll let somebody else go. If we voted to adopt this ordinance, does that automatically mean it's adopted? How does that work until the people have the referendum? How does that work? So I really know what I'm going to be voting on.
The state won't be, none of these recreational businesses can open until December anywhere in the state.
And it is only going to be the other six that are in limbo right now waiting to open up. So it's going to be down the road farther before any of these operations really get.
I mean, if you, if you put through a zoning ordinance that said that a recreational marijuana retail store was permitted and the referendum was put on the ballot and the vote was against allowing it, then the state would not issue any licenses.
In, in the town of Hopkinton.
But it would still be legal to, to use and to purchase in other, in other towns where, where it is permitted. So you, you can, you can have an ordinance against using it in public, but you can't tell people that they can't use it.
Well, I, I think that. Like the reason I just stated that marijuana can impact people in the vicinity, unlike somebody drinking an alcoholic beverage.
What do you mean affect? Like?
Well, I mean, just the aroma, you know, I mean, it's just like. Well, I mean, just the aroma, you know, I mean, it's just like.
I mean, not saying it's going to get them, like.
No, but I'm just saying is that impacts people when people smell the smoke of marijuana versus other types of smoke. A lot of people can tell it's grass.
You know, it's not even. Prohibit the, I mean, I would, that would be separate from the zoning ordinance, but you can prohibit public use of it.
And that's not the only form, Scott. People aren't only smoking marijuana. You know, there's other forms of.
I realize that, but I'm saying that normal, the normal thing is seems to be smoking. I'm willing to listen to what other people have to say. Thank you.
Sure. I do have something, Chair.
Sure.
Excuse me. Yeah, I mean, just, I'm not totally opposed to it, but like I've said publicly, and I will say this again. Everybody sees this nice shiny object. Everybody's attracted to it. So like some things in past town councils, bad people come before us and promise us the world and look where we're at with certain places. I'm not opposed to it, but I mean, I thank the town attorney for kind of setting us right on what the state wants. It may be the state's rules on how they govern these, but it's in our backyard. So I think it would be best if we kind of, like the attorney has said, wait and see what comes out with the next thing, then we kind of kind of tailor it as it goes along, you know? And another thing, these places, you know, here I go back to the shiny ball. If the town is going to take 3%, don't forget a lot of these places do nothing but cash. There's no, hey, we're going to do a Venmo to Hopkinton or we're going to drop a check off to you. So there are some things we're going to look at on that financial stage.
Yeah, there's, so anyway, so.
Mr. President, if I could kind of take that as a, one thing that I would advise you to do is, one way or another, whatever policy you decide, I would suggest getting this into your zoning ordinance, whether it's allowed or not, but you want to get out ahead of this because otherwise someone is going to come and try to open business and you know, this, and if we don't have this spelled out in our ordinance, it could wind up in litigation and it could be a judge making the decision and not the council. And so I would very much suggest whether, you know, whether it's permitted or not permitted, however you want the use table to look. But I would suggest getting one in there because it is legal. People will start coming and trying to locate businesses here. You'll want to have spelled out what is and is not allowed. It's inevitable that this is going to happen and you want, you know, I'd like to see the council make that decision about what zones this is allowed in and not happen. You know, have ambiguities or gray areas where we're going to have something to litigate, send a court deciding for us.
I'd just say that I've put a lot of time into it. I've read the ordinance, I mean, the state statute twice. You know, I've talked to doctors, I've talked to other people. And so that's why I proposed this. I wanted to make sure that we were ahead, you know, kind of like, you know, Tony Seifel said. You know, that whole shiny object, like you said, like prior councils potentially, I mean, I don't see the parallel to that because, you know, you know, that market wasn't regulated by the state, you know what I mean? So this year is being regulated by the state. And it isn't, I would assume it's an incentive by the state, the 3%, you know, to entice, you know, towns to to want to get on board with it. I am obviously proposed it. I will say I am for this use table. If there's any other discussion, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd like to know why you have special on 902, four and five as opposed to a piece all the way down the column.
Well, one would be the manufacturing. It's more, so you have a retailer and well, more for me. So this is partially put together too by Sheri from zoning, based on what she thought too may be, you know, a good use, you know what I mean? And where they should be used based on her recommendations and her knowledge and her experience. So but then again, I mean, it's posted here. It's for discussion. We can talk it out. I just think some of it's a little more nuanced, you know what I mean? Where, you know, the testing labs, you know, the manufacturing of cannabis products and stuff like that versus just being a retailer where you, based on definition is you are buying from the cultivator and then you are selling. You're not a cultivator and a retailer, you know, so it's, they've really kind of split all of these up. Every use table in here comes with a licensing. So these are all licensed operations. Even the workers are licensed and have to go through a, you know, a background check and all kinds of things. So these aren't, you know, these aren't bootleg whiskey makers, you know what I mean? These are multimillion dollar, like serious people investing in this stuff. It's not, you know, but I also want to mention too that in a state law, anybody in the state will be able to grow marijuana inside their house. You'll be able to have six plants remature and three immature plants. So it's going to be all throughout town. I mean, wherever it is. So it has to be in the house. It says in the residence. But, you know, with the new laws, I mean, is it going to push people to try to grow it outside in town in Hopkinton? More than likely, I would assume, based on what some of the penalties are, you know? There's expungement that goes along with this too. Anyone who's had a a, like an offense that is within the limits that are allowable now in this current law will be expunged or have the opportunity to be expunged. If you're committing felonies and doing all that other stuff while you're doing it, you give a truckload of it, that's a different ballgame. You're not going to get that expunged. So drug dealers are not going to get expunged. Drug, people who have, are in possession of it, that's a different story. You know, there's, I'm not sure if many of you know, and this is just an anecdotal story, but if you are arrested for possession of marijuana, say even a small little bit of it, that you cannot apply for financial, federal financial aid. You cannot get a federally funded student loan if you have a marijuana charge on your record. That's just, that's.
That's not right. I would agree with that.
But that is, that is, I mean, that's just where we're at with it. You know, I think we're in 2022 now. You know, this is just as legal. It's just as whatever. It's regulated. I mean, I've had a conversation with my kids. I mean, you know, and tell them what it is. I mean, I'm not scared of it. I just want to have a good dialogue here. So hopefully we'll have some more.
I still want to know what's the criteria for giving a special use permit?
I would think more so. I mean, I would like to actually have Sheri kind of talk to that.
Okay.
I think that really that that's going to get flushed out once we open this up for hearing discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a hearing right now. So yeah, these are all things that can be flushed out as we speak.
The criteria for a special use permit, if you're writing zoning work, but I just, I don't have a copy of that right now. And I wouldn't want to speculate about.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speculate.
But I could pull it up on my phone.
And yeah, no, if you'd like to, we will move back to the end of that question, Sheri.
Sure, Sharon, go ahead.
Do you have any other questions, discussion or anything in regards?
Well, if ultimately the purpose of this hearing is going to be to decide whether we want to make it a referendum or not?
So this is a hearing on the use table here. This is to allow this use table into our zoning ordinance and to allow each of these uses, 900 through 905.
Okay.
The one thing I do know with a referendum is that if you if you if, say, it gets to a referendum and it's voted down, you can't have recreational sales or cultivators. You can't pick one or the other. Now, I don't know whether or not that's going to allow for, you know, cannabis product manufacturing. I mean, I don't know. What do you think?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking up the order.
I apologize. I apologize.
I have the answer to Councilor Davis's question.
Sure, please do.
The town zoning ordinance says that there are five factors. Granting a special use permit, zoning board shall be satisfied by legally competent evidence that the proposed uses and/or structure, one, will be compatible with the neighboring uses and will not adversely be surrounding neighbors' use and enjoyment of the property. Two, will be environmentally compatible with neighboring properties and the protection of property values. Three, will be compatible with the orderly growth and development of the town and will not be environmentally detrimental with or that all best practices and procedures to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on neighboring property the town and the environment have been considered and will be employed, including but not limited to considerations of soil erosion, water supply protection, traffic limitation, safety and circulation, and five, that the purposes of this ordinance and as set forth in the Concreteness Plan shall be served by said special use. So those are the five criteria that the zoning board consider if someone applied for special use permit.
So in regards to 902, the recreational only, I mean, especially use in a manufacturing, I mean, again, it's probably not necessarily, you know, again, so the zoning board would review that and say, you know, is a retail, you know, cannabis store going to do any of the five things that were listed there by Tony Seifel? So those are, that's the criteria. So I mean, take that criteria and look down this, you know, use table.
It's basically just, so the zoning board has some oversight to just make sure it's not going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood that, you know, basically just summarize it.
Because I mean, not all manufacturing zones fall right into the spot where they may, you know, may not be affected. Some spots are special uses or it's more, some spots are better than others.
Well, it's just basically, I mean, rather than saying it's permitted by right, it gives, it's presumptively permitted. I mean, most special use permit applications are granted, but it gives just a little added oversight. And, you know, if the town gets more information about the proposed use before it goes into effect and you know, the zoning board has a chance to put particular conditions on the permit, you know, that might be appropriate, whether it's, you know, for traffic or safety or what have you. You know, this isn't, you know, when you're talking about a retail store, you're not really talking about environmental issues like some others. It's probably more about just traffic and safety, the impact it have on, you know, businesses.
So just a couple of comments. I agree with Tony Seifel that I think we need to get ahead of this and I definitely agree that having this use table in place is going to benefit the town down the road. I would throw out an idea that because a lot of this is all up in the air and we don't really know what's going to happen with the state and all of that. And with the information on the special use permits, I wonder about us considering at least initially making all of these that are not non-permitted special use instead of permitted so that we can have some more oversight and control. And then later on, if it's felt that certain, you know, certain uses are, you know, not impactful, then we can always change it to permitted.
Sure. I mean, I can look at this use table and maybe identify some spots that I would say. There's also some spots I hear too that I would feel comfortable with the town council making a decision, you know what I mean?
And some of these uses are a lot different than others. A laboratory is just going to have, you know, deliveries being made and a few employees showing, retail store is going to be open to the public and have a lot of traffic. I mean, there, some of, you know, some of these uses are very, very different.
Right.
I mean, the amount of traffic, car traffic from one of the cultivators is probably very low.
Very low.
So I guess it's just, you know, it's certainly up to the council's judgment as to what would require a special use permit or not. I think that, you know, the cultivation operations, laboratories are probably very low impact.
And you probably wouldn't even, I mean, and I'm going to say that you wouldn't know that they're there. I mean, just like any other business. I mean, any other like lab or independent company, I mean, they don't have signs on the front of it. It's probably not. I mean, you wouldn't. I mean, no one's going to drive by any of the cultivation facilities in town and know that there's cultivation facilities in those places. It's just not. I mean, nobody knows now, right? So I mean, nobody knows.
I mean, it's certainly up to.
People do, but not the general public.
It's absolutely up to the council's judgment. You could make them all special use permits out of it.
Right.
I'm just, I guess, trying to advise you on, you know, the reason you might want a special use permit is for an activity to.
But that would also give the zoning board, I mean, they can shoot down every single special use permit. Well, because this to me is not a moral issue. I mean, if it's a moral issue for anybody, then, then you're, then I don't, I think this discussion isn't. You know what I mean? I think you have to take it as this is a state law and we are trying to do what we need to do to potentially increase revenue, maybe bring a business in here that would potentially bring other businesses in. You know, we sit here through all of our, you know, workshops for our budget meetings and there's no one here, nobody's showing up. We have low turnout for town budgets, you know, so I mean, I'm banking on that, you know?
I could say that like if, not just here, if any town's zoning board was just systematically shooting down every single marijuana application that would get reversed and worked pretty quickly. I mean, that just, the the reasons to deny it have to be grounded in, you know, the facts and evidence and the law.
I mean, I.
It can't just be personal opinion forming, you know, zoning decisions.
Right, right.
So, so no, I mean, if there was a town where every single application would be denied at the zoning board for, you know, kind of arbitrarily, then those would all be reversed.
And also for the record, North Stoneington is going through the same thing right now with their, with this whole, this whole thing. They're going through a use table thing where they're going to, you know, identify places that it can be located. It's coming to North Stone. Lisa, you had your hand up?
Well, if my two cents, devil's ad, maybe. If the building and zoning official, the zoning deputy official prepared this and this is something that she felt was palatable, why would you open it up to having a special use permit in an RFR 80 zone?
No, 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 I wasn't proposing.
I didn't hear everything what you.
Yeah, sorry. I wasn't proposing changing any of the non-permitted items.
Yeah.
Just the, you know, permitted to special use as kind of a baseline where we would start there and then.
I didn't hear everything you had to say.
Yeah, and then discuss, you know, we can discuss, you know, item by item. Well, is it really, does it really require special use or can, in case of a cultivator, can we just permit it in manufacturing or?
Sure. No, I mean, I look at it as, and I mean, I can be swayed on special use permits. I mean, that will add, you know, another you know, scope of looking at it, you know, looking at the actual location that it's going to be and, you know, is it going to be a problem? You know, putting this here is, you know, according to what Steve said, are there going to be some issues with traffic? Right, stuff like that, you know, location kind of ways. So I mean, I am definitely amendable to that.
I'd like to ask a lawyer a question. Is it, you think it's legally sustainable if we were to allow this, to change all the Ps to S in the commercial and manufacturing zone? Just so, you know, I sit here tonight and the chief called out a lot of people that got, you know, busted for marijuana and here we are talking about allowing it. And it's, that contradiction is not lost on me and I'm sure some people. And this legalization of marijuana is very new. And at least now you would seem logical, at least for discussion, to change any P to S. And you would have at least some oversight. And somebody comes in and say, well, I'm entitled to this license on something which has been illegal for us. And I'm, I'll be 70 next year and pot was always an illegal thing, you know, all of a sudden. And all of a sudden, uh, we're going to permit the use of it, the cultivation, everything else, you know? You, I remember the time and it wasn't that long ago where you, you read in the paper, people were arrested for having one marijuana plant and all this other stuff. Uh, so, uh, is that too radical to say? If it's allowable, it would be only through a special use permit. Was that?
You, you could, you, I mean, you could, council could, uh, draft a use table where these uses are only allowed by special use permit.
Yeah, I think I might be more comfortable with that because it, uh, this legalization of marijuana is very new. And I grew up in a time where it was a crime and that's, and I don't think people should be denied jobs because they smoked the joint and were caught with some grass. But at the same time, it is new and, uh, uh, I just think that permitted use might be a too, too liberal and at least special use permit. In sometime in the future, if we think it should be a permitted use, we could always switch from, uh, special use. Cause I know special use permits, you gotta pay a lawyer usually to represent you before the zoning board.
I wouldn't worry about them paying a lawyer.
No, but I'm, I'm, no, but I'm just saying, uh, I'm trying to think of all the angles, but, uh.
Those, those five criteria that I read, those are the only things that the zoning board is allowed to consider when they vote on a special use permit.
Yeah, then I would ask.
If they deny one based on something else, that would not be a supportable, uh, or defensible decision.
I would like to ask my council colleagues, uh, what their feeling is to allow, uh, the, in the commercial and manufacturing, under all circumstances, it only, they only be issued on a special use permit and not automatically permitted. What would the feeling of the council be on that?
Um, my feeling would be as long as our solicitor felt that it wouldn't be a roadblock, then I, then I'd be fine with that. I mean, considering, like you said, the newness of it, the, the potential perception, you know? Um, one thing I've learned a lot since I've been on the council is that perception kind of rules the day, you know? It's not necessarily knowledge, it's perception. And the things that people perceive is what kind of leads them in the direction of what they think about, you know? So, um, as long as.
Steven, if you think it's a roadblock, you can change the Ps to S's and, and allow the, you know, have the zoning board have some oversight of, of every single one of these uses. Uh, but that, that, I mean, one thing that does come with that though, is the increased likelihood that the town will have litigation over that. That if things are denied, they will appeal with that. There, there is an expense associated, you know, defending, um, cases like that. Or, so I mean, yes, you can make those special use permits, you can give the zoning board that oversight. Uh, it, it, it is likely to end up in a situation where there will be, um, you know, appeals of, of decisions if they're denied at the zoning board.
But I, I think we have to acknowledge that the zoning board in this town has a pretty good record of going to court and winning, generally speaking. So I, I'm not concerned about the zoning board of Hopkinton and making.
There's a difference between, you know.
Because they have a pretty good record of winning in court when they challenge.
Yes. Um, so yeah, I mean, we can have that discussion on it. Um, yeah. Would anybody, uh, oppose me taking a five minute break? I'm going to use the bathroom, maybe just kind of recess for five minutes and then get back to business?
That's fine.
All right. Motion taken.
You're the chairman.
All right.
You can take a recess.
If anybody needs to use the bathroom, get a drink or whatever. All right, welcome back from our, uh, short little recess here. Um, I think, did Bob, did you want to speak?
Yeah, sure. So, so I, I support, um, changing them all initially to special use. Um, really, my, my biggest concern here is with, with some of these that are permitted. Now I understand that, you know, some of these, it makes sense to just permit it because of, you know, what the use is. Um, but.
But get away, it's, it's a legal use. I want people to realize.
Yeah, no, I get, I get that. Um, I, I guess my concern is because a lot of this is very new to us. We don't really know the impacts that are going to happen down the road. Um, you know, we, we, we haven't heard from the public, we haven't heard from Chief Plummer or anyone else. Um, who, who is more knowledgeable than, than we are about, you know, some of these like, you know, compassion centers and, and, um, you know, the, uh, the retailers. We don't really know the pros and cons. And, and I guess my, my concern is right now the state regulates very heavily and they're only giving out, you know, a certain number of licenses, but down the road, are they going to open that up and say, everybody, you know, have at it? In which case, if we have it as a permitted use, then we're once again inundated by developers who want to have.
Sure.
You know, this all over town. So I, I just want to like have a little bit of control and I understand, you know, it's up to the zoning to provide that control in the right way. But I think we should have some, some sort of oversight into the growth and development of it. That's my opinion.
Sure.
I, uh, I like the special use permit. The only thing that I think could be a possibility of these compassion centers, which could be nonprofit, they could, they'd still have to pay a, uh, a special permit fee. I would, you know, I guess, you know, if it was some type of nonprofit group, I think I noticed the word nonprofit. Uh, so they would have to come up with the, the money for whatever the, uh, special use permit is before the zoning board.
I, I doubt that you'll see many, um, places that open that are compassion center, medical only, now that the recreation of it's legal. Uh, I think you would see them.
Yeah.
So you'll have the hybrids, the hybrid cannabis retail medical is going to be, so the state's going to set up a, a a section where if you are a medical card holder, right, from your doctor, that you, there's a certain percentage of that tax that you will not.
Yeah, it was just that, that thing when I was reading that.
That's where that's coming into it too. That's, that's why they do have the hybrid cannabis retail. So that way, a, a medical card holder could go to one of these stores and not pay the taxes that they would pay otherwise just on recreation.
It just entered my mind when I was reading about the, uh, a nonprofit, uh, a group, but I, I think a special use permit is the way to go because of the reasons I've already stated.
But just so you know too, these, um, these compassion centers and everything is pretty much. The compassion centers will, I'm more than likely go away, I would assume with, with, with these hybrid stores popping off. Um, so that's.
I, I just think that, uh, we're, we could be opening Pandora's box if we don't do the special use permit in the beginning.
Not going along with that.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely amendable to that. Um, I, I just don't want it to be a roadblock. Um, I know, like Steve said, you know, more and more like. I mean, I think it's a safe spot because Hopkinton, you know, we're not built like more, we're not built like some of these places where they, you know, where, you know, your commercial areas tend to be completely identified, the manufacturers are identified, you know? You might have some, some commercials slash manufacturing areas that are in like kind of Highland, you know, where they're just kind of in no man's. I, I'm sure no one's going to want to open up one of these retails spots in the woods where there's no traffic, you know? They're, they're more than likely looking for an on and an off, you know? I mean, something that's going to be, you know, just quick and easy. And, and that's that, you know? Um, I mean, it's, this has been going on for, in Massachusetts for well over a year, almost two years. And, I mean, e- every resident in the state of Rhode Island is within thirty minutes. You know, in Connecticut, once they get their button ordered with their retail stuff, I mean, Connecticut's looking at like a thousand permits for these stores. Where, you know, Rhode Island's looking at having a total of thirty three, you know, so, um, it's, it's, for me, it's either people drive through Hopkinton to get it or however it works, you know? And, and Hopkinton doesn't receive the three percent, you know, that's something that, you know, the state's going to look at, it's like alcohol. You know, alcohol's ruined, ruined many more lives, you know? Um, I don't even put them on par with each other. Um, that's what people who, you know, have a a perception of, of it feel.
Can, can you open and get comments?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, once we square away this use table thing. So, I mean, is it the council's wish that we put special use for, for everything? Is that what?
I think we're all in agreement.
I would, if you're going to amend what you put onto the agenda, I would have a vote to use that terminology that you spelled out to replace the, the terms with the ones from the state that you ran out of in the beginning. And then another vote to change the, uh, Ps to S's.
Okay, all right, all right.
So just having those two votes with those two amendments.
Sure. Okay. Uh, so do I have a motion for an amendment to, um, change what was proposed to what, with, with what was presented by me tonight? With the, the use table with the definition? Do I have a motion for that?
Uh, you're not asking change everything to special use right now?
No, I'm going to add, that's going to be a different motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we add the definitions that were given to us tonight.
A second. All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Here, I.
And Moffat, I. Motion passes. Now do I have a motion to, um, uh, to amend this use table to reflect special use permits in the commercial and manufacturing?
Mr., Mr. President. I make a motion that, uh, that all categories under manufacturing and commercial be designated, uh, S for special use permit.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel, I.
Davis, I.
Here, I.
And Moffat, I. Motion passes. All right. At, at that point, um, I will allow, um, a- anyone in the public who would like to, uh, to talk at this hearing in regards to this district use table. Please do at this time, just state your name for the record.
Good evening. Chief Palmer, Hopkinton Police Department. Uh, I'm going to try not to be the oint, uh, the fly in the ointment here, but, uh, and I'll preface, what I have to say is that I, uh, I'm biased. I was on the Attorney General's Task Force to, from two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen to keep marijuana, uh, from becoming legalized. Uh, and that's not a, as truly, I believe you're correct in saying that it shouldn't be a moral, uh, a moral interest here, and it really isn't. Um, if things went exactly the way they're hoping they go, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't need a police department. Um, when you're talking about prohibitors, that's, that's laws that are telling people they can't do what you're saying they're going to do. Well, unfortunately, that's why I have a job is because people frequently don't do what they're supposed to do. And there's where, uh, I'm going to try and switch to, from marijuana legalization to give you an idea of some of the concerns I have. And I'm not telling you, don't, uh, don't, uh, do this. But, and I'm looking at it from tax concerns. The police department survives because there's taxes out there. So I've always been a, a proponent of where we can get tax, where we can get business or bring more, uh, taxes in here, I'm for it. Um, there's some concerns that I have specifically for this. And you, you were talking, uh, and I apologize, I didn't hear everything that was going on. I got the air conditioner behind me and, uh, but you're talking about regulators. And during that time that I was up at the State House trying to lobby, uh, against this, uh, one of my concerns was always about the regulations that the states always said that they had. Um, I got out of there in two thousand eighteen. One of my questions to, to them would be, how many regulators do you have that are going to try and regulate this, what, what you proposed? Because when I was up there in two thousand eighteen, it just started coming around, but two thousand seventeen, then we had one regulator. The year before that, they had a part-time regulator and medical marijuana was in full force at that time. And police departments could not keep up with it. Um, there were so many issues. Um, and I'll, I'll just state the issues, it's already been passed, so these issues here, when you bring them to, to Hopkinton, those issues are going to get closer. And you have impairment, you have mental health issues, uh, you have, uh, the black market and you have mental health. And I mentioned mental, young people, uh, starting to smoke marijuana earlier. You bring this to Hopkinton, all these things will be exasperated. Um, but I also recognize what you say about on either side, you got, you got Connecticut and Massachusetts. Uh, and that was Representative Slater's viewpoint was that marijuana is a, is a, uh, failed prohibition. And you have, you have states on either side of us fifty miles apart that are making money off of it. And that's true. And that's kind of what the predicament you're here to is. And that's true. And that's kind of what the predicament you're here to is that you have the opportunity to get some tax revenue. And if you don't, you got other departments that are other jurisdictions that very well may. But I think there's, it's important for you to recognize that these concerns are going to be the police department's concerns. Recognize that, uh, marijuana is still illegal federally, which means that, uh, my understanding is that they can only accept cash. That's a concern for a police department. And I had a list of, that I kind of pulled up in 2000.
Speak to that. I, I believe they can take bank, I think it's just the big credit card companies don't participate. I think like your bank card.
They can take debit cards.
Okay, that may be, that may be new since I was up there, but I heard it recently. Okay. And now, and that would be another thing that I would check on. The, because I'm biased, I pulled up something I, I found in my, all my notes, uh, going back. And the National Association of Assistant United States Attorneys noted that cities and states that have legalized marijuana, uh, have seen the abuse of such laws. And this is coming from them, so I'm trying to distance my, my bias of it. And it's not bias against marijuana. I don't, I don't equate marijuana as fentanyl or heroin. But there's a lot of problems that do go along with it. And they cited eight different, uh, different issues that law enforcement had. Increased violence directed towards marijuana dispensary owners and employees. Increased burglaries of marijuana dispensaries. Now, we've run into that here in Hopkinton where somebody found out somebody was, was, had a medical marijuana grow and then they broke it into the house. So these things are, are hitting home and they are possibilities. I'm not saying that they're, they're going to happen. Uh, lack of effort on the part of dispensary owners, employees to control unlawful or nuisance behavior in and around the businesses. Uh, increased loitering, noises, litter and property damage, smoking of marijuana in public areas. Increased offenses involving driving while under the influence of marijuana. That's a, a major concern of mine. Frequently what was happening is they, they go to the, the marijuana place, buy their marijuana and they smoke or take their edibles out in the parking lot. And it's not like out, like going to a liquor store, someone does that the same way, goes in there and drinks a beer out there.
Or nips, you see nips on the ground everywhere.
You're right. Well, you, you're not, but the difference would be that you're not immediately impaired if you drink a beer. You're, if you smoke marijuana, take an edible, you are immediately impaired. So those are the concerns that I have to and from, uh, Hopkinton. And I think, you know, depending on where they are, exit one, exit, uh, two, um, are better suited for that. So it's off the highway and back on. An influx of criminal elements in the neighborhoods where dispensaries are located. Uh, marijuana distributors operating in school zones or close to schools or parks, I'm sure you're gonna, you're, you're not gonna allow that. Uh, increased sales of marijuana to juveniles under the age of 18 or to consume customers who are young. And there's one of the biggest issues that I have because the more prevalent it is, it easier it's gonna get for them to, to get the marijuana and the earlier they're gonna start to, to smoke marijuana. So, um, the other issue I wanted to mention that, like, uh, Council Gary mentioned that shiny ball there. My history of, um, going up to the State House and then doing my investigation, they would, other states would tell you this is the amount of marijuana would be sold. And frequently, it was half or less. And one of my, one of the studies was from the Oregon State Police. They had said that 70% of the people are still going to get their marijuana from a legal method. And when you, when you think of the, of it realistically is you're adding roughly 30%, I think, uh, uh, taxes on, uh, on the marijuana. So you're gonna get a large portion of people that, that they know are gonna smoke marijuana, gonna buy marijuana. But only, if only 70% of those are actually going to your dispensary, I would be careful taking their, the numbers they're throwing at you, um, when you're determining the 3% of that. But, you know, that's my quick version of, uh, of my input on it. There's a lot more that goes into it, but it's kind of hitting it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Sure, I, I'm, I'm not gonna disagree, I mean, I, I'm not gonna, you know, rebut everything you said. But I mean, there's, I'm sure, and, and I will respectfully say that I, I, I don't agree with everything that you said. You know, I, I do agree that I don't want to see in the hands of children. I don't want to see people driving under the influence. And I think that, I mean, I hate to say it, or not hate to say it, but, um, it's, it's here in a small state like Rhode Island. You know, there's gonna be 33 locations where this can be purchased. You can't drive more than five miles in Rhode Island without driving past a liquor store, that is for sure. Or package store, as we would call it, you know? Um, so, I mean, people can grow it, you know, someone's gonna break in, why am I gonna break into his house now? This is the flip side, is because I, I can grow it myself now. I, I don't need to have something growable because it's perfectly legal for me to possess it. You know, up to, up to 10 ounces, you know, personally, I mean, so it's, there's just, uh, I mean, I, I completely, you know, respect your point of view, 100%. I just don't agree with it all. But then again, I'm sure you don't agree with me, so, but we're here having civil conversation about it and I, I 100% appreciate your.
Yeah, I, I would point out from a historical perspective, in back in the 1930s, Hopkin voted against repeal of prohibition. But that, Hopkin had a strong history of prohibition. Uh, and finally, they, they brought booze into town. Old Valley voted wet and Ashway voted dry and Old Valley all voted Ashway. It's a, it, interesting town start. The fact of the matter is, when Hopkin was dry, people could go to another town and get their booze and bring it back to Hopkin. And it's probably very similar to what this is that we're debating about. Uh, the bottom line is, uh, whether we'd like it or not, and I've never smoked a joint in my life, but I'm just saying that if Wesley does it, Richmond does it, people gonna go over there and, and get it and, and it's gonna be around. So, uh, I'm trying to be open-minded. And that's why I suggested a special use permit because it's something new. And I also take note, and I've stated earlier, that the planning board of this town was not unanimous on it. But, uh, I don't think we should be absolute on this. Let's see where it goes. The, the country is going in that direction. I don't like, I stated earlier tonight, I don't like us going against something that's prohibited by federal law. Any more like legal aliens having driver's license or allowing, uh, marijuana, which the Food and Drug Administration last time I knew didn't, didn't approve the use of. But apparently there's some federal laws that you, you can ignore, uh, and there's some that, uh, most you have to obey. But anyways, I, I'm trying to be flexible enough to say special use permit. And I do believe that the public should be able to vote on. So, and I do think it's important, and I've stressed it, the planning board of this town was not unanimous on it. Thank you.
All set?
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Mr. Diori. Just please state your name for the record.
Good evening, folks. Al Diori, Woodville Road. Not appearing before you this evening as a planning board member. Just have a couple of random notes that I've made throughout the meeting. So first, I know this will come up later on the agenda. I just want to go on record as being an advocate for a community referendum on this topic. It seems to me that the community should have the opportunity to weigh in before we start enacting the specifics of an ordinance. We don't even know if we're pointed in the right direction. The issue of having this in place before an application comes forward, speaking to the solicitor. So if this topic is not addressed in our zoning ordinance at all, and an applicant comes forward, what are their chances of success? It's not allowed anywhere in town.
What would happen is, uh, the developer and their lawyer would look at the use table and find the closest thing to describe what their operation is and try to get it in under that. If the town says no, it will, it will go to court. And then, I mean, somebody will find, uh, I don't know, nursery, greenhouse, say that's a cultivation or, uh, retail store. And that means retail recreational marijuana. I mean, that's how I've seen it happen in other towns. The, the ordinance is silent on marijuana, but it says pharmacy. So they say that means compassion center. Or it says retail store and that means marijuana retail store. So that's, that's the angle that people take.
So it seemed.
Find another use that is permitted and say that that includes their, their marijuana business.
Understood. I appreciate that input. So it seemed to me the most logical approach would be to enact an ordinance and put no everywhere until the community decides that this is a yes or no game. And then you can modify the ordinance. That way it's been addressed. An applicant comes forward, it's clearly no, don't we have something like this for adult entertainment or something like that?
I could say that the.
We do have a use table, uh, we do have a use listing for adult entertainment and it does have no.
There we go. So I, I guess I would be advocating for something along those lines until such time as the community weighs in. Listen, if the community wants this, modify it more along the lines of what you folks are discussing now.
I mean, our, our community doesn't show up to vote on town budget. So I have a, I mean, this is just my personal opinion, not to get in debate about the involvement of some of the people in town.
I understand, I understand.
You know, I mean, that's, that's plays a lot into my mind.
If I could, um, speak to, um, the section, it's 21 dash 28.11 dash 15 of general laws. And it says, um, if this referendum goes on the ballot, it tells us exactly what that referendum will say. Uh, so it says, shall new cannabis-related licenses for businesses involved in cultivation, manufacture, laboratory testing, and for the retail sale of adult recreational-use cannabis be issued in the city or town? So the referendum doesn't apply to every single one of these uses. It applies to the, the recreational aspect of it, so the medical marijuana aspect. So there, there are things in this use table that, that would not, um, be affected by that referendum. I just, um, just to put that out there. That, I, I think it makes sense to have a comprehensive ordinance in place. Because, you know, depending on the outcome of the, you know, if there is a referendum and depending on the outcome, you want to have something in place that's ready to go once, once the businesses start coming and knocking on the town's door and the state starts wanting to issue licenses to.
So, so very good. That's an excellent point, leads me to my next comment. So, and again, while I'm not here representing the planning board, I do, I was aware of the planning board's action on this, this topic. And the planning board felt that what was before them, the district use table, was essentially insufficient for them to make a finding of any kind. It's kind of a ordinance in the making. It's not really complete. It just addresses where these things can take place. It doesn't give the planning board any tools to work with an applicant that, should they come forward. So I heard the solicitor say something along the lines, and please correct me if I'm mistaken. Well, we can't really do that because the state is going to formulate, formulate those guidelines. Well, you'll forgive me if I'm not all warm and fuzzy about the state looking out for my best interests. Instead, I would be suggesting that we flesh out this particular ordinance, including the elements that gives the planning board the proper tools. And then, if and when the state gets around to doing this and we find that our guidelines are more restrictive, we amend them.
Well, the planning board, I mean, aside from, the planning board isn't, isn't involved in.
Yeah, they will be. This is gonna come in as development plan review. It's gonna come in as, uh, major land development. I've heard lots of discussions about the zoning board, but it's also gonna come before the planning board. The planning board has some tools, don't, don't.
These are all put in a special use permit, and those will be reviewed by the zoning board. The planning board would get a chance to, uh, give an advisory opinion.
Yes, but the plan.
Special use permit.
Yes, of course, but the planning board is also going to see this as development plan review.
Some of them, yeah, some of the.
Some of them, I mean, some are gonna maybe potentially move into a store, which would require it.
Some of them will come in.
And that's kind of.
So the, the bottom line is the planning board doesn't have all the tools that it needs. So that's what they meant by this ordinance not being complete.
Board only looks at the development plan. They don't look at whether the use should be allowed or not.
I agree completely.
So I, I don't understand what the planning board would, would need. I mean, you're, you're reviewing the building plans to make sure that for traffic and parking.
Well, so, so here we might disagree because I don't quite see these facilities as being the same as a liquor store. Liquor store, we don't really talk about security, uh, topics along those lines, it just doesn't come up. I, I, I'll bet it comes up on these, on these issues. And we don't have anything that, we, planning board just can't make things up.
Well, did, did the planning board review the state laws? That, I mean, they very, very thoroughly discussed the security measures that will be needed and the scrutiny that goes into the applications that are put into these things. So I mean, this, this information is available.
So. It's available. I, I, I want to jump in for a minute. Um, I really, I've been looking through this and I listened to the planning board meeting the other night and, and I will say that I was, A, the first vibe I got was that nobody wanted to touch it with a telephone pole, alright? Nobody wanted to talk about it. It was like, oh. And, and, and it kept being said, well, if we approve this, if we approve this. The words approve this must have been said 50 times. And you're not approving anything. It's not an improvement. Or that the town council dropped this on the lap of the planning board. We didn't drop it in the lap of the planning board. This is the process in which you make a amendment to the zoning ordinance. You ask for a, you know, recommendation. If the planning board waited till the morning of their meeting to even look at this or were even sniffed at and were interested and, and went through it and looked and actually put effort into it. Cause I could tell by the lack of conversation, the lack of knowledge about what was in the ordinance and everything else, that there wasn't a full-informed discussion. I mean, I understand you want more, but, I mean, maybe the planner should have put it on a platter in, in front of you and, and exactly broke, broke it down, you know, to, to what these are.
Well, listen, did you hear the solicitor, the planning board solicitor?
Yeah.
Say the very same thing? There's not enough meat on the bones. This wasn't just the.
Because I don't think the planning board solicitor knows what's in the ordinance.
No, I might respectfully disagree about that.
I've read it from back and forth to, she could have found the answers in there. I'm, I'm telling you. You know, she's not gonna sit at the planning board meeting and, and try to look through 100 pages to find it, but we can anticipate questions, right?
This is very different from solar.
Right.
Where the, where the state left the cities and towns to struggle with how to regulate and deal with that. I mean, there, this is very, very, I mean, these are hundreds of thousands of dollars that are paid upfront for these application fees. These are scrutinized and the, 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 the regulations that they will have for security, for who can be hired, who can be allowed to work at these places, it is very thorough. All of that is, is in place and the state will be doing that, has done it and will come out with even more regulations.
Well, I, okay, I just wanted to bring forward the fact that the planning board felt it was in the making and it really didn't have the kind of ordinance that we've seen in the past that was more easily addressed.
Right. That's because, you know, the state, if it was solar, they would have had, if, if they had regulated, they would have placed a bunch of laws in front of us. And that's where, where we would have been with it. There wouldn't be any room for interpretation, you know? Where, which we kind of were led down that path. So, I mean, I'm not, it's, I'm not trying to slight the panel, all I'm saying is I understand that some people don't feel comfortable about looking at it or talking about it or seeming in favor of it, you know? Giving, giving a. giving a positive recommendation without sounding like you're all for it, you know? I mean, I get it. There was a little bit of apprehensiveness. I listened to the meeting twice to make sure I heard what I heard. I mean, that's what I do. I do my homework. I listen to everything. I mean, it drives my wife nuts, you know, but I pay attention to it. I pay attention to all of it. I don't bring anything up that I have not put my heart and soul into. I just don't. That's not how I am. So, I appreciate what you do.
Okay, yeah.
You know, and
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell.
Yes, Joe.
Joe Moreau.
Old Depot Road.
I want to thank the council president for putting this on the agenda. It's obvious to me that he spent a lot of time researching this. I appreciate it. I want to thank the discussion with the town council members. In the beginning, I was a little bit concerned when I heard the expression, special use permit. Because I've been to too many hearings and meetings where attorneys and developers took advantage of RFR 80 and previous council members decided to change it to special use for solar. As our attorney, I believe correctly, pointed out, this would be strictly regulated by the state. I have a lot of respect for Chief Palmer and the officers in Hopkinton. They do a great job. And I'm sure that they would be in control of this also. I disagree with some of the comments, but I related a little bit towards alcohol. If someone has the right to open a liquor store and they can sell liquor in our town, and this proposal is regulated by the state, then the same people should have the opportunity to open up marijuana and sell marijuana. Because, you know, we're always looking at the tax base and what can we do to get business in Hopkinton? And we're going to be right in the middle, and I agree with the voters voting on this, but we're going to be in the middle potentially of someone can go to North Stonington or they can go to Exeter, as someone pointed out, and leave Hopkinton out of the picture. That's not fair to the town of Hopkinton, in my opinion. I'm glad that you, to see that you changed on the zoning district use table, those P to special, where we can, council can really have a control on who's going to put this business in. But I think our attorney hit the nail right on the head. It's state-regulated. It's going to, it's coming to Rhode Island, and it's state-regulated. And I don't see how we can decide that we're not going to do that. And are we potentially opening up the town of Hopkinton to lawsuits from proposed businesses? But thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Do we have any hands raised in the audience, Jeff?
No.
So
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
Just for clarification and confirmations. On the district use table, what you did, we had a couple of
I have a copy for you if you want.
Okay, good. And I just want to make sure that I have it down properly. And your other amendment to it to include the definitions that are specified in the state law.
I have those definitions for you.
That's in the sub B of the sub A that was adopted. Will we be, that'll have to be revised and added in.
I'll give you a copy right now.
Okay.
Bob, do you mind just getting this? I'll walk away.
Does that have citations to the
To the state statute?
Okay.
Yeah, this is what
Okay.
I just did a copy.
I just, I want her to be able to find the statutes. So I, okay, oh, perfect.
Yeah, and then I went and did this. Wrote every definition up for the state statute.
I just want to make sure Lisa has everything she might need.
Yeah.
So tonight, when you finish your debate, you will be either continuing or closing the hearing and set a date for a decision, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so is there any more discussion on this? Do any of the council members have any questions, concerns, or anything? Any more discussion?
No. We have nailed them.
Do we, so, want to set a date for a decision? Where we're at? Do we have a motion to set a date for a decision?
I still have a question. Are we making a decision to make this, to do this?
We already did. We already, we already voted to amend this, to reflect what I have presented here to you and what I've read into the record.
All right. And I'm, and I just want to make sure that whatever we're going to vote on, is that something that is different from it being a referendum for the town?
That is a whole nother topic.
Okay, thank you.
A whole nother part on the agenda.
Okay, that's all I want.
And we're going to, we're going to have a motion to send this to a referendum.
We're going to get to that on the agenda, Scott.
All right.
It's on the agenda. If everybody's read the agenda, it's on the agenda.
So even if we vote, the town, the people will still
We are only voting on an ordinance.
Okay.
On a zoning ordinance, that is all we're voting on right now.
Okay.
That is
So the date we're setting is to formally vote on this district use table.
On the table, okay.
As the people vote to reject, it becomes null and void until they permit it. I understand, is that correct legally?
I'm sorry?
This becomes null and void if the people vote to prohibit?
Well, parts of it. I mean, the effect of the referendum is that there are certain uses that the state would not issue any licenses for in the town.
Yeah.
If the referendum vote happens and it goes, and it's a no. So there, the uses that relate to the recreational marijuana, the state would not issue any licenses here. So the ordinance could remain in place, but the state would not license anyone to open a business there.
Then everyone would just drive through Hopkinton and buy their stuff everywhere else.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't get 3%. That's all I'm saying. That's
Can I make the motion that we close the hearing and set a date?
Yes.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Chris, aye. Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffat, aye, the motion passes. So we'll figure a date out right now, Lisa.
Want to set it for August 1st?
That's fine.
Okay.
Right. And that's our regular scheduled meeting, right?
That is.
First meeting in August? All right, so up next, number two, extension growth management ordinance. Open a hearing on a proposed amendment to chapter 59, section 12, the code of ordinances of the town of Hopkinton, R.I., which would extend the effective date of the current growth management ordinance to date to be determined with the planning board review and recommendation to the council for its continuance beyond that date, no later than date to be determined, introduced and sponsored by Council Moffat. Proposed amendment, chapter 159, section 12, the code of ordinances of the town of Hopkinton, R.I., is proposed to be amended as follows. One, the second paragraph of section 12 shall be replaced with the following. This ordinance is hereby continued to affect through date to be determined. It shall be reviewed for continued applicability to by the planning board with a recommendation to the council no later than date to be determined. And all other parts of chapter 159 remain in full force and effect. And this amendment shall take effect immediately upon passage. Okay, so just the history on this and to back up. So, I don't know, a month and a half ago, it was asked at a, at a planning board meeting whether or not, I think it was a planning board meeting, whether we had a growth ordinance. Joe Capalbo had reached out to Lisa, and Lisa had sent an email back to Joe with, in ordinance, growth management ordinance. I started to read the ordinance, and I read through the whole ordinance, and I got to the last paragraph, and it said that there was a deadline. So I had asked the planning board to, because of, there were specific dates that I had to be, they'd have a recommendation by the end of June, and I think this was like June 15th or something like that. So, so they graciously squeezed it in and gave us a recommendation. So, so, all right, so then, after the recommendation, it had to be, you know, approved or extended or whatever before the end of the year. So we are here now. I am proposing, well, I'll back up a little bit. So the planning board had recommended that we, and I'm sure you're all aware because we got the memo, that they recommended a consultant. Or initially, the solicitor for the planning board had recommended a consultant, which the other members of the planning board kind of conferred with. I, and I think you've heard me say it before, is I am, I've lived in town long enough, knowing what I know now, and knowing that, you know, our capital improvement budget's barely $150,000 every year. And any ebbs and flows in this stuff really has an effect on our town, considering the school budget. I don't think, you know, we need a consultant to tell us, based on our budget and the financial constraints of the town, that a growth ordinance would be, you know, the best thing. So with that being said, I would like to extend it, okay? My goal is maybe extended for two more years, with the caveat that the zoning officials get on board with it, and that we work with the town manager and make sure that all the ducks in a row regarding this ordinance, you know, are done. I'm going to request that we look at how this ordinance would affect us in previous years where we're at. That way, we can, you know, have some time to decide whether we want to get a consultant or something. In the meantime, but I think we can work with the numbers and the formula now to extend this and give us some more time. So, other than that, I have nothing else on it. So it's pretty much, I put this on the agenda. I wanted to have a hearing so we could extend it and work on it and really kind of get involved with it.
So, in this piece of paper where it says ordinance to, and date to be determined.
Right.
Extend it. You want to make it
So what I
June 30th, 2024.
Right, so I would, and Lisa, I think we could probably
Or the end of the year, 2024.
Right, just extend it two years from the dates that are on there.
Yes.
So I think it was like June 29th.
The planning board review was June 30th, 2022, and
December 31st.
December 31st, I think, 2022.
Right.
Add the two years, both of those dates, we just change it to June 30th, 2024, December 31st, 2024.
Right, right. If there's no discussion, or if there's any discussion amongst the council, feel free. If not, I'm going to ask the public to for any comments.
I think that's fine.
If there's anyone in the public who would like to make a comment on this growth ordinance, please, up to the podium, please. Jeff, is there anyone that has their hand up? No. Okay. So do we have a motion to extend? And then we can, so what days? We'll just fill it in and then we can read the motion.
Did you say December 31st?
It's, the proposed amendment would extend the effective date of the current growth management ordinance to December 31st, 2024.
And then the planning board
With the planning board review and recommendation to the council for its continuance beyond that date, no later than June 30th, 2024.
I had one question for Steve. I thought there was some language in there regarding a previous exemption to this.
Right.
You know, regarding a project that I don't think
Well, there was something written in here. You put me in the direction of which section of the website. But there was a reference to an older Russian
Right.
project that is no longer, that is not the current
And this is just for the sake of cleaning up the ordinance? In the meantime?
So it's really like, it really has no effect because it refers to a project that is no longer
I didn't see that.
I just don't remember exactly which section that was referenced.
It was fairly early. All right. Under exemptions from the code, it says vested rights as an application to construct a dwelling is not subject to this section. Allowed pursuant to vested rights provisions of section 12 of the zoning ordinance or pursuant to chapter 139 of the Hopkinton ordinance, the reserve at Russian group plan good to develop. So that was an exemption that they had. I mean, if that's no longer in the works, I mean, would it make sense to clean it up?
Right. Well, what I was told by the, I believe it was the town planner who told me that that's a reference to an older project that is not the current Russian
Yeah, I understand.
And so I don't, I mean, that, really, that wording
Being in there doesn't make it, I mean, it's, it's fine if it's in there. I get that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see any need to remove it, because it really, it has no
No value.
Right. So, I mean, I think that when the whole ordinance at a later date is this overhaul, that could be part of that. I mean, I don't see any harm in even getting it in there for that, because it has no it has no effect one way or the other.
All right. That's fine. I just wanted to ask that question. So, all right, with that answer.
I made that motion.
Did you make the motion?
Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffat, aye, motion passes. Up next, under new business, discuss
Before you move on, that would be the same thing with this ordinance. I believe you'd have to close the hearing date.
Okay.
Set a date for adoption.
Okay.
Now then, you've inserted those particular dates.
Yeah, yeah, no. So
Oh, I'm sorry. I was voting to make the change right now. Okay. I make a motion that we close the hearing on discussing the growth management ordinance and set a date to make a decision.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
David, aye.
Gary, aye.
And Moffat, aye.
And now I'll make that August 1st. August 1st, yeah.
All right, up next, under new business, discuss considering possibly vote to ratify the Department of Public Works contract.
Good evening, council.
Hold on. Yeah, you got Brian here. Hey, Brian.
Hey, how we doing?
Good, man. How about you?
Good, thanks. Sorry, sorry I couldn't be there in person. I had my hands full the last couple of days, but I wanted to give you guys a high-level run-through of the contract, if you don't mind. Generally, I would do an impact statement for these type of things, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to get that out in time, so I was just going to kind of walk you through the financial impact quickly and kind of, again, just give you some high-level changes in this contract. I do trust that you guys got the redlined, edited contract, so that kind of spells out all the the changes from the previous contract. So a couple of things we negotiated, I will just take a step back. The Public Works Department, their contract expired in June 30th of 2020. So they were not under contract for FY21. We went back and negotiated with Local 808. Karen Hazard is the representative for Local 808. I worked closely with her. We were able to negotiate an MOA for FY21. That was a 1% increase, and that was the only change to the existing contract, or to the previous contract, I should say. Then we went back to the table and we negotiated a contract for FY22, 23, and 24. The financial, the annual increases in that contract would be 2% per year. In addition to, in 21, 22, there was a 50 cent increase to the maintenance operator and mechanic positions. After doing, after much negotiation and going and doing comparables with other municipalities, our size, we felt that it was necessary to increase those salaries, and so we give a base pay adjustment of 50 cents per hour. And so that equates to about 2,000, a little over 2,000 a year. And that is prior to the 2% increase they were going to get in FY21, 22. Again, they're going to get two percent in twenty three and two percent in twenty four, but no base base adjustment in those years. There was a couple other financial changes. We increased the eyeglass reimbursement by twenty five dollars. The boot allowance by twenty five dollars. We added a mechanic stipend. So if a maintenance operator works in the capacity of a mechanic, they'll get an extra twenty dollars a day. A couple other things, there was a contract signing bonus that was also, and and what this was. Basically made up for the one percent in FY twenty one is kind of how I looked at it. Because that was kind of a low annual adjustment or or salary percent increase for them. So we we gave them a flat payout of two hundred and fifty dollars for the mechanic. Maintenance operators and the mechanic and a thousand for the custodians. The difference in. In the stipend was due to the fact that the custodians did not get that fifty percent pay bump to their base pay. So based on comparables, our custodians were were. Getting paid actually higher than our comparables and neighboring municipalities, so we didn't feel that they they needed that base pay adjustment.
Brian, just one second, Brian.
Yep.
A fifty cent increase, not fifty percent increase, right?
I said fifty cents, yep, fifty cents per hour, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, that that, because you said fifty percent, I just wanted to, some heads went up in the air.
No, no, so, yeah, times, it 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 works out to be, yeah, actually, a thousand per year, yeah. And then the they also are now going to get Juneteenth off. So they'll, we might incur some overtime if they get called called in on that day, but. That, you know, it's not not middle of storm season or anything like that, so that's not a high probability. And then we also negotiated, we added in longevity for the employees. That were hired after July first, twenty two thousand twelve. In the previous contract, if you were hired after July first, two thousand twelve, you did not get longevity. So we actually added in a two percent longevity at five years and a three percent at ten years for those newer employees. So that that's the high level, the total financial cumulative cost of labor agreement. For both the MOA and the three year contract is is around a hundred and forty thousand is the impact. So that's about thirty four thousand per year increase, which is is palatable. We, as you know, this is, we've been negotiating since July of twenty twenty one with Local Eight O Eight and and. There was a lot of back and forth. We met on several occasions to try to work things out and, you know, it was. It was a, it was a tough, tough go at it, but I think at the end of the day. We got something that was palatable for our taxpayers and and something that hopefully will keep our our employees happy as well. Which is, you know, always the goal with these labor contracts.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, the the last thing that I just wanted to say was that there were a few things that the the town did work into negotiations. Because it's kind of give and take. So we incorporated some new Janus language, which is beneficial for the town. There was some some strengthening to the language on sick time and and trying to tighten up on the abuse of sick time. Not not that we have an issue in public works. Generally, you know, there's there's maybe one one employee or two employees that that we've had issues with in the past, so. We're trying to strengthen that language up. Also, there was some management rights and the discipline policy. The town also strengthened the language on those. So so we, you know, it wasn't all all give, you know, we did. We did get some some good adjustments that I I think will help myself and. Management in the future and Dave Caswell over there as far as managing operations, so. But but that's it. If if anybody has questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
There any questions? Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Russell? Um, I've I've looked it over. I thought, you know, like Brian said, I know there was some giving, but there was also some taking, you know, as far as, you know, some of the. The tightening up of some of the stuff, so I I will be approving this this public works contract.
I do have something to say, just a little disappointing, you know. You know, the front line, you know, the police, fire and DPW. It would have been nice to see them get some kind of COVID compensation. You know, of course, maybe it wasn't outlined in this contract from what I read, just just a statement, that's all.
Is there a motion to to approve or?
Mister President, I move that the. This contract be approved and I make that a motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
First, I.
Marvel eye.
Davis eye.
Curie eye.
And Moffett eye, the motion passes. The Department of Public Works contract is approved. Okay, up next, discuss and consider and possibly vote to include a question on a November twenty twenty two ballot in regards to the cannabis. Recreational cannabis.
Mister President, I make a motion that we place on the November twenty twenty two ballot. In reference to the question regarding cannabis.
That is, as you've read it.
I I feel like it would be worth going through it again.
Okay, I would draw my motion so it can be done legally.
Well, I I would just like to.
You need to use the words, you have to use the words.
Lisa, do you have a hand up?
Well, I was gonna.
Hand it back.
Couple of things also, because we do have to have specifics as far as the question is concerned.
Right, well, I I could read for you exactly what the law says here about the referendum.
Alright.
So so this section is twenty one dash twenty eight point one one dash one five, municipal authority.
One one eight point eight five.
Twenty one dash twenty eight point one one dash fifteen. Subsection A says, other than a city or town that is a host community for an existing licensed medical cannabis treatment. Which Hopkinton is is not, any city or town may, by resolution of the city or town council. Pause to be printed on the ballot in an election held on or before November eighth, twenty twenty two, following question. Quote, shall new cannabis related licenses for businesses involved in cultivation. Manufacture laboratory testing and for the retail sale of adult recreational use cannabis be issued in the city or town? End quote. Subsection B says that upon the adoption of a resolution by the city or town council pursuant to the provisions of subsection A. The commission shall not issue any new cannabis related license pursuant to provisions of this chapter unless and until. The electors of the city or town vote to approve the issuance of new cannabis related licenses in the city or town. Says this provision shall not apply to the issuance of hybrid cannabis retailer licenses. Part C, if a majority of the ballots cast on which electors indicated their choice against granting the license. Then no new license pursuant to this chapter shall be issued by the commission relating to the sale of recreational cannabis within the city. Provided, however, any existing marijuana cultivator with cannabis testing laboratory. Licensed pursuant to the medical marijuana laws. Shall be permitted to continue operating within the municipality pursuant to the conditions of licensure without regard to a referendum. Any city or town, this is subsection D, any city or town that by referendum declines to allow the issuance of new licenses. Relating to the sale of recreational marijuana will not be eligible to receive revenue. Pursuant to section twenty one dash twenty eight point one one dash thirteen. And that is the section which talks about the three percent local tax on every sale.
And ju- just so everybody knows, there's already two cultivation facilities in town. So by voting, you know, I'm just saying, just, that's not going to change. That's going to be, so they're already, that's not going to say they, they're not going to be kicked out of town, just.
Are those recreational cultivation? I I guess what I'm.
Well, so right now, there's only three compassion centers in the state of Rhode Island.
Right.
Okay, they will not start recreational sales till summer first.
Okay.
What they're going to do is they are going to allow the compassion centers to become hybrid. Okay, and that's how that that's going to be the entryway into recreational marijuana. Now, about a year ago, the state licensed six more compassion centers, okay? The state put a a limit on the amount of time that they had to get up and running and get all their, you know, the ducks in a row and and open up. So there are currently six licenses that are in pursuit to open up, and those nine businesses will be the first. Retail cannabis stores in the state. So that's where that's at. Just information, but so, I mean, we have a mo- are we making a motion?
I have a question. How much of of what you've read is going to be put on the?
Well, just the part that was in quotes.
The first part, thank you.
So the item that will appear on the ballot will say, shall new cannabis related licenses for businesses involved in the cultivation. Manufacture laboratory testing and for the retail sale of adult recreational use cannabis be issued in the in the town? That's what the ballot.
That's half the ballot right there, that question.
So that that would be every single town that chooses to put this on the ballot, it'll be the same question.
So so that covers everything that would be available to the town. In terms of the three percent revenue, tax revenue.
You wouldn't get any.
If 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 the town, if the town, if we put it on the referendum and it's and it's rejected. There's no opportunity for us to get any of that three percent in the sales.
Correct.
Although the town would, I think there's an avenue to, you have to petition the state legislature. The legislature to be able to ask them for another chance to do that.
Sure, yeah, there is a procedure, and if you'd like me to, I can read it, but there is a a procedure available to sort of. Have another go at the referendum, but it literally takes an act of the state legislature to get another back at.
Is that sufficient? That that quote that he read.
That's sufficient, that's what's going to be on.
Yeah, that's.
Right, that is.
That's that's sufficient because.
That is, that is what it says you have to have. So the Board of Canvassers by the tenth of August have to certify that question. I did go ahead and I prepared it based on what the Secretary of State's office provided me for guidance. And I have certain things, but I'll have to have Steve help me out with one section as far as authority is concerned. I can deal with that with him tomorrow, if you decide to put this on there, and it says. Excuse me, the title of the question will be, one, retail sale of adult recreational use cannabis. And the question will be, shall new cannabis related licenses for businesses involved in the cultivation, manufacture, laboratory testing. And for the retail sale of adult recreational use cannabis be issued in the town, question mark, and there's a re- in a proven reject option.
Now, I don't think any motion has to stay.
No, but the law also says, upon the adoption of a resolution. By the city or town council pursuant to the provisions, so I prepared a resolution, if you are going to go that route.
Okay.
The proposed resolution is resolved, that's the Hopkinton Town Council authorizes the following question be placed on the November eighth ballot. Twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two ballot, shall new cannabis related licenses for businesses involved in the cultivation, manufacture, laboratory testing. And for the retail sale of adult recreational use cannabis be issued by the town. That would be the resolution, if that's what you wanted me to do. But that's what it says, it said by resolution.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It was nice of the state actually to make this easy. Basically, it's, are you going to put this question on the ballot or not? There's no real discretion as to what the question, how it would be phrased.
What's the difference between a resolution and a referendum?
The resolution.
Resolution is your authority, the town council's authority. Pushing this towards the ballot in November, sending it to the Board of Canvassers who has a deadline of the tenth of August. To rat, to approve that question and get it to the Secretary's Office.
So we have to do both.
I'm sorry?
We have to do both.
I think the.
By voting on this, we are authorizing.
You say resolve, or you could do a motion, but typically typically you also approve by by motion. But since the language in the the law says by adoption of a resolution. I thought maybe you might want to have a resolution.
Okay.
But that's up to you, I don't want to tell you what to do. I'm just telling you what to do.
I'm not making the motion, so I guess I'm.
I think you started to make the motion and you stopped.
So if you want that language, I can provide you with that.
Yes. Oh, God.
I don't think we need to to overthink it.
Right.
Too much, it's either yes or no, will it be on the ballot?
So, okay, so.
Because the.
We can vote on a resolution to approve it to be on the ballot.
Alright.
So let me tell you what the Secretary of State's office gives me as as representative to the Board of Canvassers. It gives me this guidance, below is a sample local question. So what you have to have for a local question is the descriptive heading, the authorization. Either if it was approved by the General Assembly, please include the public law chapters. I don't think we have a public law chapter yet, but we have. Sub A. Text of the question, the vote, there's a lot that we have to give them, that has to be correct before they'll say yes.
So we should do everything.
So I think that will get you started.
Okay. I make a motion.
To adopt the resolution.
To adopt a resolution as such. That be it resolved that the Hopkinton Town Council authorizes the following question to be placed on the November eighth, twenty twenty two ballot. Parentheses, shall new cannabis related licenses for businesses involved in the cultivation, manufacture. Laboratory testing and for the retail sell sale of adult recreational use cannabis be issued in the town? End quote.
Counselor Hurst, I second.
Alright, I'd like to have some discussion. I'm not in favor of this. I'm not in favor because look at the audience, this 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 is one of my reasons why I'm not in favor. Because.
You're not in favor of what?
This resolution. I'm not in favor of putting it on the referendum.
I.
Okay.
I respectfully disagree.
And I'm not done, I'm not done talking, let me.
Okay.
So after we had this long conversation, now you don't want it.
That's.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm not going to sit on somebody's toast just to figure if you want to make a motion.
That's fine, that's fine, okay, I'm ready to listen.
I'm not going to say, don't make a motion, because I don't agree with it.
I'm ready.
But but I mean.
Alright, so.
Go ahead.
Alright, is this. A, I know how much time I've put into knowing what's going to happen, how it's going to happen. I would love to see somebody randomly pick somebody out of the people that are voted on this and tell me what they know about this, okay? What I do know is I know the town of Hopkinton needs money, okay? Well, second, what I do know is that this is legal and it's been legalized by the state of Rhode Island. Okay? And all I hear is tax, property tax, property tax, property taxes, oh, we need more business, we need more business. This will bring business, this will make other businesses want to be here, because it's going to bring traffic, that's what businesses want. I don't want something voted on based on perception, because I know that's exactly what's going to happen. It's perception. It is perfectly legal in the state of Rhode Island. People are going to drive through Hopkinton, they're going to pay taxes elsewhere. It's ridiculous. I think this is the state trying to cover their butt, you know, to say, oh, we try, it's not so bad, but. I don't, we were elected to be here, okay? Two elections ago, five people ran, right? We before, not many people, you know, if you weren't in the soil, you weren't running. Look at it now, we don't have any, nobody wants to run. So to leave it up, and I understand, you should leave it up to them, but you know, we get three hundred people for for a town budget vote. We can't even, you know, we've passed one budget in three years. I think we need to take the bull by the horns and not put it on it and. Know what we know is right. I mean, at least I I know it is right. Because North Stoneington's going to put it right there at the truck, okay? Telling you, that's where it's going. Telling you, that's where it's going, highway commercial, that's where they're going to zone in it, that's where it's going. So, that's my, my view on it, I, I understand, give the people a choice, but we have a whole bunch of uninterested people in Hopkinton. It's very disappointing, so I am against this referendum, I am against what you said, I do not want to.
So what do you want to do?
I want to vote no on it, I want to vote no on it, and don't put it on a referendum, and by voting no on it, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, Kai.
Well, wait a minute, wait, 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 I'm misunderstanding here.
You are asking us to approve.
Putting it on the.
To putting it on the ballot, I'm saying that I am against putting.
So if you don't put it on the ballot, what are you going to do?
This, right here, this is what's going to happen, this, and, you know what? If it's not even on the ballot and it doesn't get approved, then this may never even happen in Hopkinton. People might go, oh, you know, I'm going to Richmond instead, if Richmond doesn't, or, or however it goes, because there's four licenses going to be given out out of seven or eight towns, so this may not even happen here, but if it does, I want to talk to you about it. But I, I am against allowing perception to decide this. I, I, I just don't think there's enough people out there who are informed, they're going to read the first sentence of it and go, eh. I'm, I, I just know, that's, that's the case, but, if, if you want to support it, support it, I, I, I'm just saying that I'm voting no, I'm not here to twist any arms, I'm just here to to say how I feel.
I speak.
Knowing what I know. Go for it, Scott.
I believe in democracy, one of the reasons people don't respect politicians is. Okay?
Yeah.
Is that politicians think they know all the answers, and the public is ignorant, and the public is the boss. And, in some states like California, they seem to vote on everything. And Rhode Island is, is not the same, I believe the people should be able to vote, whatever they feel, and if it's a legal question, then, uh, they will, uh, it'll be thrown out in a court of law, but I believe it's very rare for the people to have a chance to vote on something. See, I grew up, and I was born nineteen fifty-three, and marijuana was always a dirty word, and society has changed, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, as far as people being apathetic, people are only interested in when it's something that really usually impacts their pocketbook or something of that nature. I don't see necessarily this is going to be a big cash cow for the town, but I believe people should be able to vote on it. And as far as apathy, this year in this election, my party almost has a full slate. Uh, so, the interest in this election in twenty twenty-two is better than twenty twenty. So there is an increase in, in, in interest in this town, uh, so, that part is incorrect. I believe people should vote on it, people have, uh, sometimes taken interest in something, other times they don't, it's whatever moves people at any particular time, but this issue is not a typical issue. Uh, the legalization or this whole thing with marijuana is a lot different than a regular vote, it's not like a vote on uh, other types of things, and very rarely do people, other than monetary issues like budgets, people never have a chance to vote on anything. Other than, uh, something like this, which has nothing to do with money directly, like voting on a budget. So I'm in favor of allowing the people to vote, and, uh, whether or not people do an informed vote, people vote for strange reasons. Some people vote by their party, some vote for gender, uh, ethnicity, race, whole bunch of things. People that study political science and elections know that people vote different ways for different reasons. And some people are more interested in things than, than others, but I think that this is going to be a high turnout year, and I think that that issue, uh, and the legalization of marijuana after it's been forbidden for so long legally, there's going to be above-average interest in it, so I support allowing the people to vote on it. And how they vote, uh, is their business, but I do believe people should be able to vote on it, thank you.
Um, I, I also, you know, I look at like this, Scott, we don't ask them to vote on zoning ordinances, we don't ask them to vote on whether or not we're going to allow a narcotic-selling drugstore to be here in town, or whether we give out liquor licenses. I get it, you know, this is kind of a bone I think the states may be throwing out, but to, to your argument about people vote for dairy, various reasons, I hope that people vote with informed. You know, this whole gut stuff, I don't buy it, you know, and, and, and there's more interest because you have a full slate, I, I, I don't buy that either. Um, but that's fine, you're entitled to your opinion, I, I live in a democracy, and you know what? They decided when they voted us into the town council, that was their chance at democracy, and I get it, and, and this is how, how it's working. You know, this is how it's working through the process, by, by, by being here, Scott, you, you know how, I mean.
I, I've been interested in political science since I was a child, people vote for various reasons, whether it's logical, illogical, or deliberative, or not deliberative, or because a certain person says something. Politics is an irrational activity, a lot of times, sometimes it's rational, a lot of times it's irrational, and people move by emotion.
And it's taking advantage because it's irrational, there are elements out there that take advantage of those irrational parts of it, and that's just ridiculous, I don't look on that aspect, I'm not looking to win all the time, at, at, at all costs, that, that's not how I operate. So, I will say for the last time, I am against this resolution to put it on the referendum. So we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second, right?
Yeah.
So, all in favor, it was, is there any, any other discussion? Anybody else have anything they want to say?
It's, I kind of, let me speak on that, I mean, we've talked about turnouts many, many times. You know, the last budget, there was three hundred forty-five people turned out for seventy-seven hundred, seventy-seven hundred registered voters in the dis- or the town. So I kind of get what you're saying on that, Steve, and I kind of, I, I get what you're saying. And, but they also, too, we should also give the people a choice, right? You know, we're here to do the town's business.
You get my choice, I'm sorry, I won't.
No, I'm done.
I understand, it's give my choi- I mean, they can choose again, if they vote for me, you know, if they vote or vote against me, when, when it comes time.
I agree with what you're saying, I mean, it's traditionally, we've always had, I know, I get, I get what you're saying on that. I'm kind of in between, you know, agreeing, agreeing with you and vote, private voting with you, or should we let it up to?
Asked twenty people last week, and about two of them knew that it was legal. Like, no, no, it's, it's because it's not that legal, yeah. That's why, nobody, either they can, they don't, I mean, it's, that's, that's, I'm done talking.
I'm sorry, but. I, I, I gotta admit, I, I'm really on the fence about this, um, you know, I, I do agree with what Steve is saying, that, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of people who vote just based on the fact that it's marijuana and they're against it, with, without, you know, knowing what they're potentially giving up in terms of, you know, their, um, their own tax hit, you know, if we, if we don't recoup any money from that, you know, that may impact them tax-wise. So, you know, there's part of me that is against this, because I think we, we should do all we can to encourage business development, and to, you know, try and protect as much as possible the, the tax, you know, the tax base, um, and, and, you know, property tax, keep the property taxes low. Um, you know, on, on the other side of the coin, I, I agree with you that it, it should be up to the people to decide whether they want something or not, um, but I think, at the end of the day, I don't think this is one of those, one of those things, I, I think it's, it's more incumbent on us to, to, to go the way of, of protecting, you know, protecting people's, you know, tax rates, and, and, um, you know, doing what we can to encourage businesses, so I guess I would, I would probably vote to, uh, to not put this on the ballot.
Right, is there any other more discussion? All right, no other discussion, I'm all in favor of approving this, um, resolution to put the, um, cannabis, uh, recreational cannabis question on the twenty twenty-two ballot.
Chris, aye.
Moffett, no.
Davis, aye.
Marvel, no.
Curie, aye.
Motion passes. Up next, number three, discuss and consider and possibly vote to adjust off uncollectible taxes for tax years from two thousand eleven through two thousand twenty-one, for the total amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents, submitted by the tax collector.
I make a motion that we vote to adjust off the uncollectible taxes for tax years twenty eleven through twenty twenty-one for the total amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents submitted by the tax collector.
Is there a second?
Seconded, Mister President.
All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Curie, aye.
And Moffett, aye, motion passes. Up next, public comment, if anyone would like to make a comment, please approach the podium. Is there anybody online that would like to make a comment? All right, with, uh, no one wanting to make any comments, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mister President, I move we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Chris, aye.
Marvel, aye.
Davis, aye.
Uh, Moffett, aye, motion passes.